Harding. Johnson. Melton. Plermo is absent. Rowe. Begley. Mr. President.
Please rise for the pledge and I'll provide some pre-remarks.
This to the flag, United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible liberty and justice for all.
So the first thing I'll say today is we wish you happy birthdays to my wife and daughter Cindy Clark. In the form that Friday is her birthday and it's gonna be number forty, so it's kinda weird. Otherwise, on the, on the rest of our remarks, when we do our two proclamations today, which are to honor Earth Day, which was last Saturday, but then also Arbor Day, which is this Friday, so it's probably.
Okay, I believe we have Ruth Richter and also is Brittany Dipstani here today? Anyone from Green Omaha Coalition in Green Bellevue? They may not be here, but we'll go ahead and read the proclamations in their honor. And the first one for Earth Day reads as such. Whereas April 22nd, 2023 is the 53rd anniversary of Earth Day. A time marked by massive coast-to-coast rallies and an estimated 22 million Americans took to the streets, parks, and auditoriums to urge America to come together and clean up its air and water systems. Despite the event amazing success, the event's amazing success in resulting decades of environmental progress, momentous challenges remain before us. And whereas today, the United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change is calling for an acceleration agenda to speed up global actions on climate change mitigation, climate action is needed now more than ever, especially by the heaviest polluting countries to ensure the future of generations to come. And whereas our efforts can benefit society in countless ways, from improving air quality to enhancing ecosystems to boosting public health, we have many options including recycling, composting, planting trees, and pollinator and insect-friendly gardens, supporting farmers' markets, driving electric and hybrid vehicles, investing in solar energy. And whereas on this observance of Earth Day, the Omaha City Council continues to work together within our communities to generate, advocate, and support the implementation of new ways of living to ensure a sustainable future, the City Council hereby resolves that April 22nd, 2023 was Earth Day in the city of Omaha. I was pleased to attend that event last Saturday. It was awfully cold. April in Nebraska can be unpredictable, but there was still a great turnout and we appreciated everyone being there and having an opportunity to update citizens on the city's climate action plan that is unfolding this summer. The second proclamation is to Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of Omaha officially designates April 28th, 2023 as Arbor Day in the city of Omaha. I know that the Arbor Day advocates and city representatives will be planting a tree in honor of that in a ceremony this Friday in my district, which I appreciate, at Orchard Park. So we thank all those folks for working on that issue and to help us commemorate a really important day that originated here in Nebraska. We'll make sure these folks get the proclamations for those events and I appreciate your patience in having us honor those two dates. Madam Clerk.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today. We look forward to hearing from you on our many items. I would encourage you to turn your cellphones off or at least to turn them to vibrate.
Item six to consider a classy liquor license for Old Mill Lounge located at 10944 West Dodge Road.
Public hearing on number six, public hearing and vote on number six is today. I believe we have the applicant by Zoom. Tara Swanson will get you off mute here in a minute. Okay, try that.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Your name and address for the record?
My name is Tara Swanson. I live at 2132 South 108th Street, Omaha, 68144.
Thank you. Just here to answer questions, right?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents on number six? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thank you.
Item seven to consider a classy liquor license for memoir located at 930 Harney Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven are today. Proponents, please. Please come down. And then just your name and address for the record, please.
J. Mark was 14154 Corby Street, 68164.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Items eight through 11 can be considered together for state and highway 133 addition located northwest of State Street and Blair High Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item eight, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to GI District. Item nine, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 10, a resolution to approve a major amendment to large project special use permit to allow communication services in the GI District. Item 11, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearings and votes on items eight through 11 are today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Brad Weckerlin with HDR 17406 Augusta Circle. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed. Mr. Fansla, I might just ask one question that we talked about this morning, just so folks know. This is, this is the expansion of what is a massive investment by Google in our community, which we appreciate. And so it expands that footprint in this area to the northwest of our city. There was an initial issue with the development that involved some native prairie land that was mistakenly, I think, overlooked and became part of this development. Since that time, I believe the applicant has done, taken steps to mitigate that issue and is doing some native grass preservation in the areas of 144th and State, which we appreciate. My question on this now is just that with this expansion, there is no further concern or impact on native prairie grasses at this particular location, right?
Dave Fansla, City Planning. That is correct. The timeline, the disturbance of the existing prairie. Everything you said is correct. And they've they're contributing to a dollar amount to another prairie for restoration. So that's correct.
Thank you. Now, seeing any further lights? Is there a motion? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 12, an ordinance to rezone property located at 405 and 411 Bancroft Street from GC District to our 435 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 13, an ordinance to rezone property located at 2219 South 13th Street from GI District to MBD District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 13 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none. Please come down.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Beriantis-Patlin, 3305 E Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68107. I stand and I wonder if my councilman, he's not here today, wondering if he had voted on this prior. And I'm a proponent. I like anything done in South Omaha. Anything that's a positive act. And so I was wondering, any question? If there, if has, did he vote for this? Was there any questions that he had? I would like to know. And the same thing with number 14 also. And can you relay anything?
We're not responding to questions from testifiers, but-
Okay, yeah, but anything positive that's going on in South Omaha, since he's not here to ask a question too?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak on number 13? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Number 13. That one is in my district. It's where I crossed from the Admiral and I'll make a motion to approve that today. Thank you.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 14, an ordinance to rezone property located at 3510 South 24th Street from GI District to CC District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, my name is Victor Ortiz, real estate agent. I'm representing the owner for this building. For any question, I'll be here.
Okay. And your address, please?
4818 LS Street, South Omaha, 6817.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none. Any opponents?
Good afternoon. My name's Jordan Gershenson. I live at 3504 South 24th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68108. Actually sent in a letter earlier. I wasn't sure I was gonna be able to make it, so if anyone was planning to read that, I'll just do that now. Yeah, so I'm a resident of the neighborhood and I'll admit as a neighbor directly adjacent to this property, and I'm a little bit troubled about the potential consequences of rezoning the property for commercial use, specifically as a convenience store. And my primary concerns are, you know, increased foot traffic and loitering, likelihood of attracting activities that may disturb the peace and security of the neighborhood, including excessive noise, littering, other disturbances that would negatively impact the quality of life for my family and other residences of the area. Or residents, I should say. We've already experienced some issues with homeless individuals sleeping on the sidewalk in front of our home and asking us or sometimes yelling at us for assistance while we're going about our daily activities. And I'm worried that the presence of a convenience store would exacerbate the problem and lead to a heightened sense of insecurity for myself and my family and other residents of the neighborhood. In addition, we've encountered numerous instances where people mistakenly pull into our driveway, believing it to be parking for the neighboring property, for the applicant's property. The proposed rezoning could significantly increase the frequency of these incidents, potentially resulting in blocked access to our property, creating unnecessary conflicts with visitors to the commercial establishment. Furthermore, in February, our vehicles were vandalized, tires slashed, and windows shattered by a baseball bat. The vandals accessed our property by jumping the fence from the applicant's parking area. This incident has already caused considerable distress and unease and the prospect of increased foot traffic due to the rezoning adds to our concerns for our safety and security. Another significant concern is the property's large windows, which directly overlook our driveway, yard, kitchen, and dining area, as well as many of the neighbors. While we understand and accept that neighbors may occasionally have a view into our living spaces, the prospect of a commercial, of commercial patrons constantly looking into our home is disconcerting and would impact our privacy and comfort. In light of these concerns, I respectfully request that the rezoning application for 3510 South 24th Street be denied, as it would negatively impact the quality of life for my family and our neighbors. However, if the rezoning is approved, I strongly urge the city to require the property owner to install privacy fence along the privacy, along the property lines. This would help mitigate the impact on the privacy of our family and our neighbors and provide an added later layer of security for our property. I believe that maintaining the current zoning designation would better serve the interests of our community and preserve the residential character of the small slice of neighborhood that remains. Thank you for your consideration. I look forward to a thoughtful and fair evaluation of this rezoning request.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none. Public hearings closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I see that it's currently zoned GI. Mr. Fansla, could you tell us the difference? Because I would, I would think there would be, under the current zoning, the opportunity to do something that would be worse for the neighbors is available. By changing the zoning to CC, wouldn't we be limiting what can be done with that? With the section? Could you maybe correct me or explain the difference between the two? What it is now and what it's becoming?
Yeah, Dave Fansla, City Planning. Well, there's no, there's no reason for me to correct you. You are correct. It's GI is a more intense zoning district than CC. And the request is to rezone it to CC so that the use could be allowed.
So what could go in there now without us changing the zoning? I mean, could you just give me, could you just give some examples? Because it sounds like that at least the neighbors are thinking we're allowing something that what could be done with it now?
So yeah, there's a lot of uses that are allowed in GI zoning. Obviously, the ones that are allowed by right and then with condition or special use permit. So I was able to pull up the zoning code. So an example of permitted uses in GI, auto sales, auto repair, auto washing. I'm just going through the list. Custom manufacturing, general industrial, light industrial, warehousing, transportation, terminal. Granted, it's a small lot, so some of these uses probably couldn't operate on that site. It's a very small GI lot. It's probably not properly zoned as GI because of its size. But yeah, no doubt that the permitted uses in GI are more intense than the permitted uses in CC.
Okay, and so right now, those could be done without us voting on it, correct?
Those permitted uses, yes.
Okay. Thank you for, thank you for clarifying that. And then I also just, one other question. By changing it to CC, also, we're also adopting an ACI overlay? And just because you can describe it better than I can, what, what is the purpose of that? And how does that benefit the surrounding owners?
The ACI overlay is a part of the zoning code that applies the most stringent design standards that we have on the books. So building materials, if there's any change, changes to the building have to meet the higher quality standard. Building materials, ACI. If there's a parking lot, would require more green space in that parking lot. It prohibits pole signs. So it's all of those design standards that are on the books at the city.
And so would, as part of the ACI, they wouldn't be able to put the poles up and have all those obnoxious advertising signs for alcohol and cigarettes?
Yeah, pole signs are not allowed.
Okay. And actually, just today, I got a complaint from somebody for some other areas that say it's really junking up their neighborhood. So that's definitely a benefit when you have some of those convenience shops that have all those big, obnoxious signs. So they are limited from putting those kinds of signs up, correct?
Correct. Yeah, with the ACI, no matter if it's in place now or in the future.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Fansla.
Sure.
I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Fansla, if, maybe bear with me for a few more questions.
Sure.
I believe on the second floor, there's a single-family residence, is there not?
Correct.
And with, so the zone, that, the zoning to CC would also allow for that activity by right on the second floor?
Correct.
Okay. And is there some historic sign, I mean, the, the building, maybe a lot of people can't picture it in their mind, but as you drive down 24th Street, I think it's on, it's on the west side, but is there a historic designation on this building?
I don't know if there is or not.
I don't believe there is, but I think if, most people would recognize it.
I would guess it, I would guess that there's not, but yeah, it's, 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 you know, if you go up and down 24th Street, you know what building we're talking about.
And I, I remember when this was going through the planning board, too. I think there was, I think there was some actual excitement about really what was going on down here. And from what I understand, and I don't know, Mr. Ortiz, if you could come up just for a minute. I mean, I likened it to it really being like a bodega. And I don't, I don't think there's a liquor application with this. Mr. Ortiz is coming up. Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. You'll have to give your name and address.
Victor Ortiz.
And address, too, please.
4818 LS Street.
Okay. And again, you're, you're, this is just gonna be basically kind of like a little bodega, kind of, or little food shop?
It's gonna be a convenience store. They are not gonna require for any liquor license.
No liquor, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right. That's, I wanted to make sure that was on the record.
And they are not gonna make like a fresh food, nothing like that. Just packaged food.
Yes, okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's no further lights? Is there a motion? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 15, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district the property located at 13105 West Center Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 15 is today. Proponents, please.
Kyle Hazy with E-Nade Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. I'm making myself bill for any questions council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 16, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district the property located at 15656 Ford Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Be used communication in opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
Zach Ferguson, Lambrey Nielsen, 14710 West Dodge Road, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Items 17 through 19 can be considered together for property located northeast of Military Avenue and Aurora Drive. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 17, an ordinance to rezone this property from R2 District, R8 District, and CC District to R2 District. Item 18, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item 19, an ordinance to rescind the ACI 3 overlay district for this property.
Public hearing and vote on items 17 and 18 and 19 are today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name's Todd Muller with Ellie Point and McKenna Architecture. I'm here to represent Marion High School. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer. 322 South 50th Avenue.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed. I would just say this is in my district and I'm supportive of these items. It's an improvement to the Marion High School campus, primarily their athletic fields. And it's primarily privately funded and creates a nice little entrance off 72nd Street, which currently doesn't exist. So I think it's a great improvement to an important high school in our city. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Items 20 and 21 can be considered together for property located at 1941 South 42nd Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Be used communication in opposition. Item 20, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow automotive sales in the GC District. Item 21, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
Public hearing and vote on numbers 20 and 21 are today. Proponents, please.
David Schaefer, 504 Bellevue Boulevard North, of the registry.
Thank you. Here to answer questions, right? Okay. Any other proponents that want to speak today? She walked away from that microphone pretty quick. Any opponents today? Seeing none. Public hearings are closed. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Fansla, I got a question we kind of talked about a little bit this morning.
Sure. Dave Fansla, City Planning.
I got some opposition. There was a constituent in Morton Meadows. They were concerned about heavy traffic from the intersection there. And just confirm for me, so this isn't, this isn't an item to allow at the center mall to have automobiles parked there like it's a, a car lot? Is that correct?
Yeah, if I heard you correctly, it is not a typical car lot. It's basically an office, a small office space that's going to be leased for online sales, online transactions with no display of cars. Better for sale.
So in other words, if you wanted to sell that red Porsche that you don't have, I know you don't have a Porsche.
You are correct.
If, if anybody wanted to go sell a car, it's done by the internet. It's not done by, I come and park my car there and hope that somebody comes to look at it and buy it there. Is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Reeseman, can I?
Hi, Jeff Reeseman, City Traffic Engineer, 1819 Farnham.
Again, to the, to the point, Dave, Mr. Fansla, kind of cleaned that up a little bit. This, if they did have a car lot there, even if they had, that's a, an old mall. So the traffic, in your traffic engineering expertise, even if there is more volume going into the mall of something besides a car dealership open, which this is not, if there was a couple sandwich places or whatever they want to put in the mall, the traffic on 42nd, you detail how that would work if there was more traffic going into the mall?
Yeah. So the, the size of this dealership, internet car dealership, is very small. I'm told there's like 10 employees, six parking stalls. As far as how much traffic that particular operation would generate, it's very small. And so the mall itself, when it was built, is built with multiple access points for ingress and egress. And it's certainly capable of carrying a lot more traffic than it does today. There are no known issues with 42nd and Center as far as anything that's reached our radar that requires mitigation. So it's my opinion that this land use would, would be fine from a safety and operations standpoint.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll make a motion to approve these. Thank you.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items 22 to 24 were held on April 18th. I don't see any further lights. Is there a motion? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Begley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Public hearings on agenda items 25 through 50 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent. And if you are a proponent or an opponent, and just for city council members' knowledge, we do have the managers for numbers 25, 26, and 28 by Zoom if needed today. Any testifiers on items 25 through 50? Seeing none. Public hearings closed. There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item fifty-one, a resolution to approve the twenty twenty-two tax increment financing annual report.
Public hearing and vote on number fifty-one is today. Proponents, please. Ms. Hadley.
Good afternoon. Bridgette Hadley, City Planning. So here to present the twenty twenty-two annual TIF report, the tax increment financing program allows the city of Omaha to engage in public-private partnerships. Most that will zoom out. Public-private partnerships to encourage private investments in areas that have experienced disinvestment, areas in need of housing, areas in need of neighborhood revitalization, and areas with historic properties that can be repurposed as, as examples. TIF is also helps to sustain neighborhood communities, economic base, and spur additional development. TIF is a financing tool used to incentivize the private sector to invest in areas and projects that align with the city's goals, master plan, and various redevelopment plans. In that regard, TIF is a leveraging tool used to attract private sector investment. So that could be the for-profit or nonprofit, which makes leverage really important. The investment by the private sector partnering with the city's TIF program achieves revitalization in neighborhood communities, which accomplishes, accomplishes community and economic development throughout Omaha. So I'll just cover through this report some of the new TIF projects that were approved, even the total active TIF portfolio of Omaha, highlight some of the urban core projects in the TIF districts created in twenty twenty-two, and then highlight some of the projects that have paid off or matured. So for the TIF activity, which is covered in your report through pages four through ten, and this, this year, I tried to give you a few more visuals and not so many, only just numbers and words. So the report has a lot of infographics and numbers in here, so I think that's the best I'm going to be able to do from here. But twenty-three new TIF projects were approved last year. That represents a hundred and fifty-nine million dollars in TIF loans, and that does not include the accrued interest, and that's almost one point three billion dollars in total project investments. The types of projects approved range from mixed use, which is about fifty-two percent, and that's a mix of commercial and residential, or a mix of office and retail. Housing projects is twenty-two percent, and that ranges from owner occupied to market rate rental and affordable units. Commercial projects, that's about seventeen percent, maybe just office or hotel, and then industrial projects, two percent. Also, because of these proposed TIF projects, the city leveraged approximately sixteen point eight million dollars in public infrastructure work. Sometimes that's not emphasized enough, but with our TIF projects, we do try to garner, making certain that there are public improvements that occur along with those projects. As it relates to blighted areas, and I'm going to switch and put another map here real quick. This is a example of a CRA map, a little bit different than what's on the website, but it's the same. The purple areas that you see on this map here represent what is the CRA or the community redevelopment areas. And those areas simply tell us where TIF projects can be located. So just as a quick tangent, wanted to put that there. So going back to the report, our blighted areas, there are approximately twenty-one point seven six, almost twenty-two percent of the city's total acres that are actually blighted. Now jumping to affordable housing, I'll first mention that just over seventeen hundred housing units were proposed through the approved TIF projects last year. A hundred and nineteen of those proposed projects were affordable units. Of those, a hundred and nine units, or ninety-two percent, were proposed through the use of LI-Tech, low-income housing tax credits. So LI-Tech, the use of LI-Tech, has become extremely important to this program in terms of making sure we can deliver some affordable units. Now I'll jump to page eleven. Page eleven just highlights the urban core. Actually, before I go there, page six of your report is a picture of the map of all of the TIF projects approved last year. And so maybe I'll stay there. Page eleven actually goes into the urban core, but this map shows you the area of the urban core, which I'll touch on in just a moment. So eleven projects are located in the urban core redevelopment plan area. That area includes a portion of five hundred-plus city blocks in an area generally bounded by Fifty Street, Fiftieth Street on the west, Coming Street on the north, the Missouri River on the east, and about Woolworth Street on the south. That planned area has two sub-districts, a streetcar district, which is a little hard to see. So this darker red represents the streetcar district. This outer orange area represents the influence area. The streetcar district is one to three blocks from the proposed streetcar line, and as most people know, streetcar line is proposed to be Harney and Farnham Street. And then the influence district area is four to six blocks from the streetcar line. Of those eleven projects in the planned area, eight of those projects approved last year will contribute to, contribute a portion of their TIF to funding the streetcar. Also, what happened last year as a result of this urban core, four new TIF, urban core, we call them, I call them urban core TIF districts were created, and they're comprised of existing parcels within this influence and streetcar district area. So they're within one to six blocks from the proposed streetcar line. Those are existing parcels that were not a part of any TIF project. So the rest of these pages are just images of the actual TIF projects that were approved with a few details about each project. So I'm going to jump to paid projects, so page sixteen of the report. So that's a list of the eighteen TIF projects. And before I get into that, I would say that Omaha has seen a hundred and ninety-seven total projects that have paid off or have reached their maturity of fifteen years in our full time of approving TIF projects. So a hundred and ninety-seven. So while we do approve a lot of TIF projects, there are a lot of TIF projects that have paid off and are continuing to pay off every year. So for twenty twenty-two, eighteen TIF projects paid off early and matured at the end of their fifteen-year term. By the end of the fifteen-year term, those eighteen projects had a base value of approximately sixteen point four million and had increased by approximately two hundred and forty-eight million in assessed valuation. That represents just over a fifteen-hundred percent increase in the base valuation. And I think one of these. Here it is. So those same eighteen projects are generating an additional five point six million in tax revenue. So that's really the point of these TIF projects is, as they become TIF projects, they're going to be a lot better than most projects that are approved because we expect more out of them. And so they do increase the tax base and do generate a lot more in, in tax revenues. I will point out on your report, these words were reversed, so it has been corrected. So this, all of this, the graphics are this, are correct, the numbers are correct, all of this is correct. It's just that on your report, I caught that, that said base revenues and it should have said values. And this said base values and it should have said revenue. So it's been corrected and it will be correct when it's published on our website. So just wanted to point that out. So to address the possible question of what if TIF was not involved on those properties, a simple what-if analysis was conducted to kind of, or to evaluate what growth might have, might have occurred if there was no TIF or very little development occurred at all. Using historic growth rates provided by the city of Omaha Finance Department, the results were that only thirty-six percent over the base values and base tax revenues was the increase. So property valuations would have been nearly five point eight million versus two hundred and forty-eight million. So that's what the what-if analysis kind of told us. It said also that property tax revenues generated would have been approximately a hundred and thirty-one thousand versus an actual of five point six million. So just to jump back now to talk about the active total TIF portfolio, and a lot of this is a requirement from the state. And so starting with page thirteen, going through page sixteen. Keep in mind that many factors impact assessed valuations of property in real estate such as location, levy rates, the local, regional, and national economic conditions, the supply and demand for the type of real estate, et cetera. Some projects may not reach the, their initial projected value or full value potential in the timeframe anticipated due to construction delays. And so some of that is borne out when you look at this table. Lastly, in the past three years, we have seen supply chain issues, labor shortages, rising construction costs interfere with the progress or the start of some TIF projects. So looking at the total, our Omaha's total portfolio of active TIF projects at January of this year, there were two hundred and sixty-one active TIF projects, which produced a hundred and thirty-two percent increase in assessed valuation over their base value. So that meant their base value was eight hundred and seventy-three million, and as of January one, twenty twenty-three, the value had increased to just over two billion. The TIF dollars invested in those active TIF projects represented about four hundred and fifty-three million in TIF loans. And again, not, not including the accrued interest. And that was a total of three point seven billion invested in TIF projects. Now these loans represent about twelve percent of the total capital stack of, of these projects. That's another way of saying, you know, when TIF is a part of these projects, it only represents twelve percent of the funding source. So this means that the city is attracting about eight dollars of other funding, mostly private dollars, for every one dollar of TIF that's invested in the project, a leverage factor of about eight. On page thirteen of the report, those same active TIF projects achieved seventy-seven percent of the valuation initially projected or anticipated by the project owner at the outset of the project. So again, this table starts with some of the older projects and goes down to the newer projects. And I would say that, note that at the bottom of the table, these more recent years, you'll see twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. That's really indicating the, the year of construction when the projects began. You'll note that those more recent years will always reflect projects that have begun construction and thus no assessed values to report, or the projects will only have a partially assessed value. So that's why the values are so low. On page fourteen of the, of this report, it just illustrates how the actual current values of the portfolio of active TIF compare to the projected values since we begun reporting, and that's been about four years. So during these last four years, the actual values are generally off about twenty percent. In conclusion, the, the choice or decision to approve the TIF projects often results in much, in a much larger increase in the tax base, which benefits the city, the county, the state, taxing jurisdictions, as well as citizens. Because the projects are helping to fulfill the city's master plan, various redevelopment plans, city goals for, for community and economic development, the TIF projects help to make the Omaha, Omaha a better place to live, work, and play. With that, that concludes my report. I thank you. I am here to answer any questions. This report, again, will be on the, our TIF website by the end of the week.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We wanted to give you a little extra time to make that presentation, as we do sometimes, to get questions about TIF. And I want folks to know that this document is available and done every year by the Planning Department. On our, on our agenda, it's available right now to the public, but then, as you noted, it's posted, as is previous years, on the Planning Department's website, correct? Great. Thank you. Right now, I'll take other proponents on number fifty-one. Seeing none, any opponents?
Good afternoon, City Council, Omaha, Nebraska, Donnie R. Johnson, forty-nine twenty-eight North Fifty Second Street, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. You want me to spell it like it's at the school board?
Okay. No.
In the meantime, I've noticed Mrs. Bridgette Hadley in the Planning Department doing a wonderful job. But what I've noticed out of that process, that North Omaha has been missing in some of the revenue. So can we turn her over to some projects since there's a future development of North Omaha, but it keeps getting lost in the paperwork? So how can we fix that problem where North Omaha can get some of this TIF money? Because I understand the generation behind us love the young and the restless and general hospital and give all the money to the, for university. But if they want to live that way, shouldn't they share some of the wealth? I have noticed the young generation, they have acted like those young folks at Blackstone. But me, when I became a member of Omaha Chamber of Commerce, they gave me a Black Angus steak, but they didn't give me all that money. They give it to the university. So how do we fix that problem? Continue developing Mr. Warren Buffett programs? You know what I told Mr. Warren Buffett and the Belts folks?
So your interest is additional TIF projects in North Omaha, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm trying to figure out this problem I had. I asked Mr. Alan Greenspan when you're going to retire from the Treasury. He's telling me, why? I said, sir, the FBI keep asking me why I put bonds all over the world.
All right, Donnie, you have to keep your remarks to the TIF report, right?
Yeah, this is a part of the process of them sticking their nose in my business, and I'm trying to put bonds all over the world in case the economy collapses in America. And North Omaha, we ain't getting nothing. So how can we fix that problem? I'll ask Mr. Benny Perlmutter, my good friend, when he get back.
Thank you. Any other opponents to number fifty-one? Opponents?
Rebecca Barry Antos-Patlin, thirty-three oh five East Street, Omaha, Nebraska, South Omaha. I kind of want to mimic him. You know, I, I've seen things go up. Everything's going towards the riverfront and downtown is, which is beautiful and everything. But I, I kind of want to say that I would like to see more. I know we've gotten some grants, some pretty good grants here and there for, for organizations or associations, but I would like to see like a, a nice theater in South Omaha. I would like to see more money go. If TIF can help build, you know, have some businesses build in South Omaha, I would sure like that. We got a lot of kids in South Omaha, so I kind of mimic them, the gentlemen in North Omaha. If I can meet with you later and talk with you, and that would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents to number fifty-one?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. Once again, I am opposed to TIF in general, and since this is an annual report, it was a good report. But this would be a great opportunity for Bridgette or somebody to clarify very, very clearly for- very clearly for me and people like me that don't quite understand all those facts and figures and don't quite believe that the developers or the owner of those properties pay all those property taxes. They're going to pay off the projects over that many years. Even the Reader Magazine has insinuated that it's other owners of property in the area of those projects whose property taxes go up for it. But we never clarified that one way or the other. But it was out in the public domain by the, uh, by the Reader Magazine. So I would like that maybe pointed out during your debates with Bridget today, since it is an annual report and we won't have a chance to ask it again for a year. I just think it would benefit all of Omaha to know. If you had a project in my neighborhood, would my taxes go up for it or not? Now, the reason I'd like to see that is because of today's, uh, morning meeting of the Douglas County Board. One of the commissioners was very adamant that, uh, oh my God, housing properties are going down, values are going down. We're not going to have the money to pay some of these projects that are going on. So I think we need to take a close look at it and explain it more clearly to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents to number fifty-one?
Luis Jimenez, twenty-seven oh-nine Dewey Avenue. I am an opponent, but first I want to say that I, that I agree, uh, with the fact that you're presenting. We're getting a report. That's good. That's what you, you should be doing. Getting reports from, um, the projects, even though it's an annual, maybe you can get it quarterly. My, uh, biggest complaint with this is that right in front of you, you, you see the TIF committee values these projects and they're off by twenty-one percent. She said twenty percent, a little bit more than that. And that's been the case, um, year after year from this, from the reports, from the annuals report. They say, oh, we're off by twenty percent. I don't know what you guys think of it. You don't really talk about TIF besides, oh, this is going to be great. But I, it's a technical critique about the process. Shouldn't they say, we think the, uh, these, the TIF committee should say, we think this project's going to be worth, or the valuation's going to be worth this much, but we're going to be off by twenty percent. Really, it's act, it's probably going to be less than that based on, um, the year-to-year report that you're getting. Or find a different way to assess and get a better accurate, uh, prediction on the valuation. Twenty percent's a lot. You know, um, and also when the TIF projects come up, do you guys ask what else they can contribute since the local bodies aren't getting, uh, property taxes until the project comes to completion? Like if they can contribute to the OPS Foundation or other foundations that, uh, work with, uh, the local bodies? Shouldn't you at least be asking for a few hundred thousand dollars, um, over fifteen years? It's not much over fifteen years, but the local bodies can find a way to use that money. Especially if you give them to the foundations, the foundations, uh, that are connected to the local bodies have programs. They have an agenda. But I, I mean, what I'm saying is, um, you approve these projects, but you should be asking for more. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other opponents today? I don't think I see any. Public hearing's closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Yeah, and Ms. Hadley, could you come up? Anything is alleged. I don't wish to debate you on this. I wish to, um, follow up with some questions and that we go over every year and we repeat them every year. But I think it's also important because it might be somebody's first time hearing this today. I just want to clarify, and by the way, I think this, your report is great. I, it's a report, so we, we just vote to accept the report. If we didn't accept the report, it wouldn't change the fact that these are still the facts. So, um, I appreciate the report every year. The loans, when we refer to loans, those are private loans, correct?
Correct.
People often think that they are loans from the city. There are no city funds that are being used for this, correct? The developers take a private loan out.
Correct.
If their project fails and they don't pay it back, do the taxpayers pay it?
Not at all.
Not at all. These are private loans maintained by private developers and a hundred percent of the risk is on the developer.
Hundred percent.
It were, they're investors.
Exactly.
Um, and I, I wanted to make a note, the amount of money, and I think that pays for, they take out loans, private loans that they pay back. And you had said, how much went for infrastructure this year?
About sixteen point eight million.
Sixteen point eight million? That would be money that the taxpayers would otherwise have had to
Exactly.
use to pay for, when we say infrastructure, it'd be roads, improvement of roads.
Alley's.
Alley's, things that normally we'd have to put in the public works budget to pay for.
Correct.
Um, and so they're actually benefiting the taxpayer in this year to a tune of over sixteen million dollars.
Correct.
Lastly, um, it says that the local bodies need additional money. So we're costing local bodies, this year alone, the projects that paid off contributed an additional five point six million
Correct.
to all of those bodies, the public schools, typically OPS, because that's where the projects are. We do have a few, I think that maybe are out in Elkhorn, but
Mm-hmm.
um, the majority, so it was an extra five point six million increase into the bodies. So how I look at it, we may have passed TIF projects this year that are just starting. But we, we have finally gotten to the point from when we started, now the ones that originally passed are now contributing that amount.
Exactly.
So in my opinion, I think we're at a point of a wash or even at this point, potentially making more money than we would have had we never had any TIF projects at all.
I would agree.
Um, and I also wanted to note, it could be off, but I tried to count real quick. It looks like twelve of the nineteen projects are in the North Omaha area, or may, North Downtown to North Omaha.
If I could say, so on page four of the report, I didn't speak about it, but there were six projects in North Omaha. That's twenty-six percent. There's six in Midtown, that's twenty-six percent of the total projects, five in Downtown, uh, four in Exarban, and then two in South Omaha. So we do have, we have, and almost every year we have projects in North and, and a lot of times in South Omaha. So they're not missed.
Well, and in fact, the majority of the CRAs, I mean, they're, they're basically east of Seventy-second, but vast majority are east of Forty-second in the north.
At least sixth.
North and south.
Mm-hmm.
And for, none in my district.
No.
I know. We were talking about that. I just have one little area I would really like, um, to develop, but it, it, it doesn't look like that's going to happen. Um, I, Bridget, I just want to thank you, um, for your work on this. Oh, and there was one more thing that somebody noted. Um, how do we know that these properties are actually paying their taxes? Well, if people don't pay their taxes currently, unless there's a passage of a bill done in Lincoln this year, if you don't pay your taxes, there's tax certificate holders, they actually will buy the property and in three years, they take over the property.
That is correct.
Uh, so everybody has to pay their taxes if they lose their property. And in fact, at this point, they lose all the equity in their properties. That's not just in, for residential properties, that includes commercial properties too.
And if I could add to that, because as you said, they're private loans that the developers, project owners are taking out, the TIF is what pays that loan back, or at least one of the loans that they have. So if they don't pay their taxes, they're not able to pay their debt service to their bank. So their problem is going to be with their bank, not with the city.
Oh, I, actually, unlike the rest of us, it's kind of two-fold problem for them because they're going to default on their loan as well as not pay their taxes. Because all of these property owners are still paying their taxes on the original value.
Absolutely.
But they pay that loan through the additional taxes and they actually pay it through the county.
Exactly.
They also pay the county for the service. The county charges them.
One percent fee.
A one percent fee, so they're getting paid for the additional work that they have to do. And then the county sends that money back, but they take, I, I would assume the county takes their cut first, so if they're short.
I think so.
The county's going to take their cut before it pays the private loan. All right. Uh, thank you. I, I have no further questions. I appreciate you taking the time to re-explain that.
Yes.
That every year.
If I, if I may add?
Yes.
I'll just, page thirteen, I just wanted to say, even though I mentioned the twenty percent, if you look at this table, there are years where so if you were to go across to this year, the projects that began around twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, those values are hitting ninety-nine percent of what they originally projected the value to be. So it's not always twenty percent. It's just, we've been, I've only started reporting on projects in the last four years, so I've only talked about the last four years. And, and of course, those are the newer projects, so they haven't really achieved their full value yet.
So that, that twenty percent, it, it varies and as the projects build and as the value increases, that's what affects that number.
Correct.
Okay, I, I appreciate, and I, none of us have a crystal ball to know what something's going to be valued at fifteen to twenty years from now, especially with our current state of the market, supply chain and everything else. So I, I, I think we're doing pretty darn good. And in fact, even if it is twenty percent off, it's still an eighty percent increase. Correct? All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights? Is there a motion? Motion in a second. We'll call.
Harding Johnson Melton Rowe Bagley, Mr. President.
Yes.
Question pass, six to zero. One public hearing can be held for items fifty-two through fifty-four relating to crossroads located at seventy-four hundred Dodge Street. Item fifty-two, in order to approve a redevelopment agreement in amount up to seventy-nine million, four hundred thousand dollars. Item fifty-three, in order to approve the designation of an enhanced employment area. Item fifty-four, in order to approve a development agreement for occupation tax in an enhanced employment area.
The public hearing's on agenda, items fifty-two, fifty-three, and fifty-four are today. Proponents, please.
Jessica Thomas, one zero two five zero Regency Circle, here on behalf of the developer. Today in front of you, you have the proposed redevelopment agreement, the boundaries for a proposed EA area, EEA area, and then the EEA agreement. So back, as you may recall, back in February of, February twenty-three, on twenty twenty-one, last year, year twenty twenty-one, you approved the TIF plan. We have been working expeditiously with city staff. We'd like to thank city staff. I mean, I think we've been in every single city staff department since we started this process. City legal, mayor's office, planning, public works, parking, everyone. We really appreciate everyone's time. Today, we're here to get these agreements approved. I'm here to answer any questions you may have on the form of the agreements. I've also have here with me Emily O'Connor from Lockwood Development. She's going to give you the stuff you guys really want to hear about, talking about the project, give you status updates, and answer any questions you guys may have on the TIF and the EEA.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Emily O'Connor with Lockwood Development, one two nine one zero Pierce Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one one four. First of all, I want to say happy Arbor Day, early Arbor Day. So Arbor Day is actually Lockwood Development's company holiday. So we spend the day with team building and doing a lot of fun things. And, you know, last year, we planted trees in every one of our employees' yards. And so we're looking to do some more of those things too as the years go on. So as Jessica's pointed out, we're here to discuss our redevelopment agreements for the crossroads redevelopment. I would like to piggyback on Jessica's, you know, thank yous to the city. Um, we're really appreciative of the teamwork of the city departments and helping to continue to keep this project moving forward. So let me scroll. So on the screen, as you see, this is our current iteration of our site plan. It's varying probably slightly than what you guys have seen in the past, not much. What you will notice is a little more density in the residential component, so more multifamily. There's some for sale condos. You'll also notice a decrease in office square footage. We are kind of adapting to the demand and right now, office is not a hot topic right, you know, just with everybody trying to get back to the office and what that looks like. So we've gone from about five hundred thousand square feet to two hundred and fifty thousand square feet in office. However, we have flexibility here, so if that demand changes, we can accommodate. Um, another change you'll notice as well is, you know, in the central, what we call Block F, you'll see some nice, you know, what we call the central green. So before, we had programmed kind of a pedestrian plaza area. We have now introduced some green space there that'll be surrounded by retail and restaurants and, and really activate a nice park in, within the middle of the project. So scroll down here to just talk about updates of what's happening construction-wise. If you've driven by the crossroads project recently, you will have noted, noticed some lane restrictions. Um, right now on Dodge Street, M U D is in, and is getting some work done, but we are gearing up to start our Dodge Street improvements. And so what that means, that scope of work is, we are going to widen Dodge. Um, we are going to add in dual turn lanes into the project. So heading east, right now, there's one turn lane into the project. We will have two lanes going in. Um, that project really is going to take the remainder of the year. We're trying to wrap that up in mid-November. Um, so I do tell everybody I talk to, if you can avoid Dodge Street, please do. There will be some lane restrictions, you know, in different lanes as the year goes on. You've also probably noticed we have some lane restrictions on Cass Street. So we have been doing some connections on sewer work, that's just about finished. And then now we are about to kick off on May first, our Cass Street median project. So we are installing a median from Seventy-second Street to Seventy-sixth Street. That'll take about two months to complete, and then we'll be out of the way with Cass. Cass will be open. Um, traffic can flow freely there. So, um, about to start on June first, we have the internal road system that's going to take place in the crossroads development. These are public streets. Um, that will kick off June one, wrapping up July thirty-first. And really, the rest of the year, this is all horizontal infrastructure work. So you're not seeing anything going vertical yet. I know that's kind of what the public, when, you know, all of us care about is to see who's coming, what's happening. But it's a lot of the horizontal stuff is finishing, and then we anticipate a groundbreaking commencement of construction on something vertical in the spring of twenty twenty-four. Um, so with that, that's my update, but I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have, so.
Thank you. Other proponents that want to speak today?
Nicole Yvot Metro Transit, twenty twenty-two, Coming Street, Omaha, Nebraska. We are here in favor of this project today. Um, this project is going to close our westbound Seventy-second Dodge Orbit Station for an extended period of time. This particular station does account for about ten percent of our entire ridership along the Orbit Station. But we are working with the developer and we do appreciate the communication and the partnership there with placing a, um, concrete pad at a temporary stop nearby. That way, our riders who rely on mobility devices can maintain access to this important service in the heart of our city.
Thank you. Other proponents?
I was going to close out of this here.
I was hoping since she was here. Well, I'll finish.
Do you want me to leave it up for you?
Uh, Donnie Johnson, forty-nine twenty-eight North Fifty-second Street, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I've been studying that area. It's a wonderful development. I was hoping when they finish, it's, it's to the private sector, and as they say, and developers. But my teacher kept telling me to read this story over and over. You can fool so many people so many times, but you can't fool all the people all the time, by Abraham Lincoln. So I'm just asking the developer, when they finish with seventy-second, can we get some of that TIF money in North Omaha from the developers?
All right, take a card, yeah. Are there any other proponents today?
Luis Jimenez, twenty-seven oh-nine at Dewey Avenue. I'm not, uh, sure about the streetscape, the treescape. Um, you might, guys, you might have some questions if you ask more about the treescape. I appreciate that. Or if there's a different rendering that the public can see where the, more of the, uh, the locations of the various components of this development is going to be. Uh, I'm interested on the south side of, uh, the north side of Dodge.
Okay. All right.
How that's going to look, yeah.
Any other proponents that want to speak today? Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Barry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, six eight one three two. Sorry to take up your time again, but I guess this is dealing only with the streets and the sewers underneath the streets and in the public right-ofways. This is not the crossroads ground. Is that correct?
It is the crossroads ground.
Yeah. Because I thought we had the crossroads project already decided. And I'm mistaken. I, I thought the streets were already included in all this. Or is this a new agreement? Because I wonder why it's set vacant with no activity whatsoever all winter. Seemed like somebody would be losing money on that. Next question is, what if nobody occupies it? Who pays that? The city must be paying somehow for all that street work. But how much? Seventy-nine million dollars? The city won't cough that up just by themselves, I'm sure. Maybe some bondholders will, who happen to be developers. I just think there's, you know, we used to have a newspaper organization that could explain these things to us. We, they don't, they don't anymore. But maybe these young ladies can explain that to us, that this is a separate agreement, it's a new agreement, or it's part of the overall thing. And how is it not connected to the buildings that may or may not occupy that land that helps pay for it? Because I just don't understand how you can let a project go all winter with nothing being done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Emily, I might have you come up for a minute. As someone who's been working on this particular site for a long time and grew up nearby, I thought I'd have a few follow-up questions for you. And I know we had a chance to meet recently, and that you've briefed all council members, which, which I appreciate. The one thing that did stand out to me in, in the updated agreements here, and it has been a question from some of the folks I represent, is excitement about seeing the redevelopment occur. And in my case, wishing it happened twenty years ago, but intently in the last ten years, and couldn't happen soon enough at this point. So I really appreciate the work that Lockwood's doing to revive this project and get it going, and I think it is going. But there is a new date in the documents that says, these phases and the work described here must be done by December thirty-first of twenty-thirty. So that did pop out to me initially, but I realized in our conversations, that date is just a date in the documents that says this work is going to continue. A redevelopment of this size is massive and sometimes does take time, and I want to see quality over efficiency. But if you could speak a little bit more to timeline, I think my folks should be interested in that. I know you're talking about, hopefully going vertical in spring of twenty-twenty-four is what you said, and we'll start seeing some, a lot of activity here shortly in terms of the internal grid, right?
Correct. Yes. Now, certainly, that number's got, that date's got to scare people when they see twenty-thirty. But with anything with a project of this scale and complexity, you know, it does take time. However, this is Seventy-Second and Dodge. There is a lot of demand already, and we will be going on a significant amount of phase next year. However, we're not going to just spec buildings and have them sit there empty. So when we talk about going to twenty-thirty, you know, there, there's multifamily on the site, we're not going to build all of it at once. It's going to take time. You'll build, we'll build some units, let them absorb, see how the market's going, and you'll analyze for the next building. So, you know, good examples of that, you know, if you look at the Exarban Village, you know, they still have a couple lots left down there. It doesn't feel like there's lots open down there, but there are. And that could be a case here. You might end up with one that just takes a little bit more time. Our development Sterling Ridge, one hundred and thirty-second and Pacific, we still have two lots there, too, that we can develop. Again, it's pretty built out, but that's, we're now sitting there about fifteen years for that project. So, you know, you write in that date, you, we have no anticipation that it's going to take that long. But there could be a lot that maybe sits a little bit longer. But I would say, again, being this, in the heart of the city, Seventy-Second and Dodge, the retailers that all want to be there, the users that want to be there, this thing's going to probably feel faster than, than we even anticipate. So...
And you're a hundred percent confident in reaching this goal and this vision, right?
Yes. Absolutely.
And that's also how these documents are structured today in terms of the city's contribution to the project, which is for public infrastructure, the redevelopment bonds we have dedicated to this. Five million of which has already been approved, but the remaining, remainder of the twelve and a half million will be done in phases between twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five.
Correct.
To ensure this timeline stays in place, right?
That is correct. And, and that the work is done. So, right now, with the CIP, the twelve and a half million, that is really towards that public improvement. So Dodge Street improvements, Cass Street improvements, sanitary sewer, the Seventy-Fifth Street, you know, there's, there's a lot of city improvement that is already taking place on this site and will continue to take place. But yes, as we've broken the CIP into different tranches, that keeps, makes sure that we're keeping on schedule and that we're receiving those funds as a reimbursement because the work is done.
So some accountability from the city?
Correct.
City's perspective. Yeah. And the overall investment is massive. The documents say six hundred million. I think in our conversations, it's likely to be a lot more than that.
It's north of that. I mean, I'm operating on that six hundred and fifty to seven hundred million dollar investment. But with the added density and some residential, I think that's going to push it. Also, the construction costs today are dramatically more expensive. So, yes, this project sits well north of six hundred million.
And the other thing we've been mindful over the years as we tried to get this project going is, is the balance between what could be considered private and public investment to ensure it happens. And when we talk, let's just say it's six hundred million, which I think is, is probably low. There'd be twelve, twelve and a half million in redevelopment bonds for infrastructure, sixty-five million anticipated in the enhanced employment area that's part of these documents, and then seventy-five million in tax increment financing that it's eligible for. So even with that mix, it's still less than twenty-five percent what could be considered public sources, right?
Correct.
And there was a story early on about this being the largest TIF ever in the city, and I think that's still probably true. But I want to make sure folks know, that's because of the size of the investment, six hundred million dollars, the, the TIF portion of this project is still only about twelve percent, which is consistent with every other project that Bridget just discussed.
Yes. That's correct.
And then I know we've had extensive conversations about the site plan and the pedestrian amenities and the bike connections and the Keystone Trail that's nearby, and the trees, which are important. So I appreciated you showing that elevation and giving your remarks before you started about Arbor Day. I know it's something your company cares about, so we do expect and, and know that'll occur. Few more questions. I know folks are always interested, too, in anchor tenants that have been discussed over the years at the site. I know you're working intently on that. Nothing to announce today, right?
Nothing to announce today.
But you can characterize it as you're making progress.
We are making progress. We've been in communications with a lot of retailers and tenants for a few years, and those conversations are well. And so we will, when we're ready, make a large announcement. We would like to splash the market. Of course, that's what everybody's curious about, who's going to be there, where are you going to shop? So, including myself.
And new to market is still the idea.
Correct.
Yeah. And then the one thing that is new that wasn't discussed in our previous items before the council in terms of the site plan is the garage in the corner of Cass and Seventy-Second, which initially was, was thought might stay, but most likely now will be demolished.
Yeah. So that is actively being discussed with the city, with our partners, and, and how that could work. So, right now, on this site plan, you're actually seeing partial of the, of that existing parking garage. We, you know, that's an idea. I don't know how financially responsible that will be, if it makes sense. There's a lot of investigative work that needs to happen on that to see if we can keep part of it, or if all of it needs to come down. And if all of it needs to come down, where does parking, you know, interject throughout the development? And when we first started, that parking garage, it's twenty-two hundred stalls. Sitting today to build a new structure, it's a significant amount of money. If we were to rebuild that today, I would say at a conservative thirty thousand dollars a stall, I mean, that's, that's a significant investment when you have that sitting there. However, twenty-two hundred stalls in the wrong part of the development, that's had some deferred maintenance and is not very attractive. You know, we were trying to work around that initially just because of the financial investment it would take to build new parking. But as we've been working with the city, and again, just really thankful for the partnership with the city and just working with us to keep this project going forward, the idea became, you know, an option to tear this thing down. And then how could we do that? How do we get new parking on site? So that's all being actively discussed today. No decision's been made yet. So...
Okay. And then similarly, you talked about the Cass Street median, which is an important talking point or aspect of what my neighbors care about to the north in Kenny Park. So that median on Cass Street from Seventy-Second to Seventy-Sixth is likely to start May first.
Yep.
Do you know how long that'll take to be installed?
Fifty-five days. So about two months.
I like the precision. Fifty-five days. That's a timed contract?
Yes.
All right. Good. And then similarly, this may be a question for Mr. Stube or Public Works. They, part of the neighbor's interest to the north, too, is making sure when that Seventy-Fourth Avenue connection is made, that they also are eligible for speed bumps,
Correct.
which the developer has offered to reimburse. And so I know that's part of the redevelopment plan that we've already approved. I think the question for Mr. Stube would be, when does the Seventy-Fourth Ave connection get made? And when would the, I know the idea might be to install the speed bumps at the same time as we do the median, right?
Well, so what I'm understanding, and Mr. Stube can confirm, because I may be wrong, but there is petitions that are going around the neighborhood right now, and they need, and it sounds like there's, you know, three speed bumps that would be installed. From what I have heard as updates, that one petition has been fully, you know, they've gotten there with the, with the signatures, but they're still working on the other two. So once those petitions are, are ready, then we'll work with the city to get those installed.
Okay. Mr. Stube, anything to add?
She did an excellent job. Thank you.
And when will that Seventy-Fourth Street, Street be poured and connected then?
So that's all happening, that starts June first. Yep. So we'll, we'll be heading in this road right here, if it shows up on the screen here with my mouse.
Seventy-Fourth Ave, I should say.
Seventy-Fourth Ave. I know we've got Seventy-Fourth Street, Seventy-Fourth Ave, Seventy-Fifth Ave, Seventy-Fifth Street.
Okay. And then, I think my last two things would be, I have driven that area a lot recently, and it is quite congested, and there has been problems, especially around the rush hour. And I would say, on Dodge for sure, which, you know, as you said, is going to be intensive for a while, but on Cass, too, has been an issue. So, Mr. Stube, I know we had a Public Works person out there just, I think it was yesterday, taking a look at things. So I appreciate you doing that, and I would just comment that, you know, there is going to have to take some patience from the public as this major construction project progresses, but also from the city and the developer's perspective, ask you to just keep an eye on it and take a look every day and make sure we're doing it in a phased way and the most expedient, less, least painful way for residents as possible.
Absolutely. Because we get a lot of those calls, so we would like to eliminate a lot of those calls. But, no, our construction teams are on site. They're meeting weekly on this topic and making sure that we are not restricting more than we absolutely have to, and that, you know, barricades are being moved night, you know, over the night, and not, we're trying to do the best we can. But it is, it is part of progress, and it will help when we have Cass Street done in a couple months. That'll alleviate some of the, some of the pain. But yes, patience is going to be needed by people that are traveling that direction for a little while.
Yeah. And then across the street to the south, we also have a major project, of course, the new library. And I know there is concern already, but there, I think that concern is enhanced, when the new library is built, about the pedestrian experience and how are folks going to access the Seventy-Seventh, Seventy-Second Street intersection between this major development and the new library well and in a safe fashion. So I know it's something you've been talking about and considering. There is work being done on that. I'm told there's, HDR has been engaged. Want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah. There, I mean, there are active conversations and have been for a little while. This is a concern from everybody down in the site. How do we get people across Dodge Street safely? And so, especially with this new investment from Omaha Public Library to the south of us, and with the crossroads, and there's, and we're seeing already some redevelopment opportunities on the other corners, you know, how do people get across? So there is not a solution yet today, but I will tell you, we are actively having these conversations. We have some direct, you know, design charrettes that are coming up, just trying to think big picture with a lot of great brains and creative minds to hopefully come up with a solution that we can, you know, that'll solve this problem. But, you know, of course, we would love the traffic from the Omaha Public Library to be able to walk over to our development and vice versa. The library would like someone shopping over there at the crossroads to be able to cross the street and go stop by the, the library as well. So...
Mr. Stube, anything to add to that?
Bob Stube, Public Works. No, she did a very good job. Obviously, it's something that we've talked about even during the time of the Bus Rabbit Transit. So there's no question that it's a very highly traveled street, both Dodge and Seventy-Second. And so, and the other thing I just want to add is that, you know, we, we do provide enough timing within the pedestrian signals. So if individuals hit those signals, there's walk time available for them to get across the street. But there's no question, it's, it's highly congested.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it is an issue we need to work on, and I'd, I'd be willing to participate in that as well. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate, appreciate that. Obviously, I'm supportive of this project. I'll support it next week. I believe this is your last major city council approval you need to have this happen, correct?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Are you going to miss us?
No. See you guys all the time. We'll be good. We're going to continue to do projects, so I'll be down here again.
I know we'll be in close contact as, as things proceed. Thank you.
Yep. You're welcome.
Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Emily and Jessica, I just wanted to say thanks for, and I want to commend Council President Fesserson for arranging those meetings because this is a huge project that preceded several of us on the council. And, you know, it's, it's Council Member Fesserson's north side of Dodge and I'm the south side, so he took some by thunder and some of the things he did a great job of, you're in the hot seat that he spared me asking you those things. So I know the people in Elmwood Park Neighborhood Association, that's a big thing with the cross into the new library that's going to be great on the southwest corner there. But you guys aren't ignoring that on the north side. And I know, as Director Stube said, Public Works is taking a close eye with you and others on that. So, and the other thing that, that I really appreciated about our meeting with the chip attendant as well, which was great to have him there, that people think that this thing, well, it's flat, there's, there's, as Pete said, nothing going vertical, that we all love that vertical vision when we drive by there. But as you kind of alluded to, that Omaha Public Power District, MUD, they're doing what they do right now, getting the backbone and all the utilities done. So I, I know that in spite of looking over there, and there's nothing going up, nothing can be further from the truth. It's for, how much have you guys invested in this so far?
Well, if we're talking about acquisitions and from the beginning, I mean, we're, we're about sixty million dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot of money. So that goes, I mean, that reassured me, not that I needed reassurance, but again, that great meeting we had here recently, that Council President Fesserson was in there with me as well. And all the things that you guys presented in there, that makes me feel real good about where you guys are at, the work you're doing, the evolution you've had to do with the post-COVID and the market conditions. But I, I'm sure the excitement of supporting this today, and, and I know it's going to be a great project. And you mentioned in our meeting that another thing that Council President Fesserson stole from me was, when you guys mentioned in Exarban, anybody that goes to Exarban Village, including myself in the middle of my district, you don't think of, well, here's an empty lot or two in there. There's still development that can be done there. So when you guys push that date back to twenty-thirty, I think of Exarban Village that even though it's not going to be done by then or close to being done, it'll look a lot like you walk in there, you won't even know that there's anything else that can happen. So, again, thanks for coming down today, and I look forward to supporting this. And excited to see what transpires in the years ahead out there. It's a great project. Thanks.
Yeah. You know, none of us can really anticipate what the future will look like. And so you do build in a little pad and cushion. And Exarban Village has done a great job activating those pad sites that are still available to develop. You don't, you don't know that, but you know, they've done a good job doing that, and we have similar intentions that it wouldn't just be empty ground sitting there. We'll try and get that activated or looking nice. So, you know, I appreciate it. We're very excited. We're excited to bring something special to the city of Omaha. That's important. We appreciate all of your guys' help and support.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
Thank you. Similar theme, actually, I was going to talk a little bit about Exarban, too, is that it's hard to believe that, I think, the original plans for Exarban Village were announced in two thousand and five. You know, construction started soon after that. So you could say, I mean, Exarban's, you know, somewhere between sixteen, seventeen years old at this point. And as you pointed out, and others have, have made similar comments, that there are still developable lots in Exarban. So these projects take time. I, I had no heartburn over the, the change of date, but they evolve. They, I think, evolved to a point of becoming better. We're talking about now about the, the parking solution. We talked about the, what you've done with, with the block in the middle being more park-like and surrounding it or wrapping it with more... more park-like and surrounding it or wrapping it with more retail and restaurants and, and food options and so I think these, these are, this is the normal progression that these types of projects, especially the scale of this project, need to take. Not do take, but need to take. The other thing I'll touch on is, has been brought up is the traffic. I know when we met the other day, I thought you were gonna use the line, but I'll use it, so. We have a lot of construction going on in our roads. We, we're just, Farnham has a little construction project just taking, taking place west of Saddle Creek. And as I said to you guys the other day, that there's a member of the city council a while back who used to sit here, Subi Anzaldo, who I think famously once said, behind every one of those orange cones, it's a little bit of progress. So we need a little bit of patience and that progress will be there. Thanks.
That quote.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first of all, I would like to thank Kimberly, Jessica, Chip, and Jim for, um, the briefing that we had this morning. You guys were able to effectively answer all of my questions and bring me up to speed and I have a full understanding now on what is being proposed in the future there at the crossroads, so I will be in support of this.
I think you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Thanks for your testimony and we'll see you next week.
Thank you.
All right. Next item. The item is passed. Madam Clerk?
Item 55 in ordinance to approve the relinquishment agreement with NDOT transferring control of South 84th Street from Harrison Street to L Street.
Public hearing on number 55 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed?
Item 56 in ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 55 of the Omaha, Omaha Municipal Code to allow for urban agriculture. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 56 is today. We've asked the Planning Department to give a short presentation on what is their urban agriculture addition to our zoning code. Proponents, please.
Yes, good afternoon, President, other members of the council. I'm just here to make a few brief remarks and I'll hand it over. I would thank on our staff, City Planners Tim Freeze and Lisa Smith have carried the, the great extent of this amendment to Chapter 55, which is our zoning code. And this will introduce new use types that allow urban agriculture, that will benefit individual residents as well as other large growing operations. This will help legitimize certain components that haven't been addressed in the zoning code up to this point. And I just wanna make a brief comment that just within the past half hour, the Planning Director from Douglas County Planning and Zoning reached out to my staff with an email and said that he's very appreciative of these changes. He's already looking forward to adopting similar language and, you know, regulations and codes with their district. So I will hand it over to Tim Freeze, who will do a little presentation and we will all be available for public comment or to answer questions that you have.
Thank you.
Bring this up here. All right, so. This is a sort of a version of the presentation we gave as part of the public engagement that we've had. So first of all, a quick definition of what we have as urban agriculture, which is the raising and harvesting of crops on a property or within a building that was not or zoned for agricultural use prior to this amendment. So we do have zoning uses and zoning districts that'll do allow for crop production, but they're sort of on the edge of the city and there's, they're, they're part, there's, the size requirements are a little bit big, so a lot of this stuff isn't possible in residential districts. And so the intent of this really is to allow agriculture to take place in portions of the city where zoning code either doesn't address it or will, would prevent it. And it's also to provide a consistent set of standards for both the people who do the urban farming and also for citizens. A couple of expectations. So we're not regulating properties that have a house that are growing food just for their own personal consumption. So if you've got a house, you've got a couple of raised beds in the back, you grow tomatoes for, over the summer, this is not something that the city is gonna regulate. It's not considered urban agriculture. It's allowed under the current zoning. We will regulate vacant lots where individuals are growing food for their own personal consumption or for sale or donation. And also regulate properties with a house where they're growing food for sale or donation. A couple of definitions that are part of this code, temporary agriculture structures. So those are agriculture structures that are in place and erected for no more than 180 days. These are usually things that extend the growing season, like in the spring, early spring, like now, you'd have these up. They trap the sun's heat, allow things to grow. You take them off in the summer when it's hot and you might do the same thing in the fall when it gets colder. So those are the temporary structures. Permanent structures are those that erected for more than 180 days. So these are things like a greenhouse that you typically see, but also a hoop house on the right there, which is a membrane structure. It's constructed differently. It doesn't have a foundation or footings, but it is up usually year-round. And so as part of this code, we are considering both of those to be permanent structures. Building integrated agriculture system, now that's something that's inside a building, vertical farms, hydroponics, rooftop gardens, things like that. And then an accessory structure is basically any other structure that's not related to agriculture itself, sheds, pergolas, those sorts of things. So what we did is we worked within sort of the existing zoning paradigm where you have zoning districts and you have use types. And we created four new use types for urban agriculture. Those are listed here. There's a community garden, which is sort of self-explanatory. That's where people are growing food mainly for personal consumption. It's multiple individuals. In this code, you would only be allowed to grow things outdoors or in temporary structures, so no permanent structures. And it would be permitted in all zoning districts, so residential, commercial, all, every one of those. The next two are sort of a pair. They're taken together. There's an urban garden and an urban farm. And they sort of differ in intensity. So an urban garden, which is less intense, which are crops for grown for off-site sale or for personal use on a vacant lot. They're grown primarily outdoors or in temporary structures. We do, we would allow permanent agriculture structures in this use type, but only on lots with a primary residence that have a house, so no vacant lots. And it would, they would be limited in that case to 10% of the site area. And these are gonna be, this use type is permitted in all residential zoning districts, so there's no special permission needed. Once this code's adopted, those would be permitted. An urban farm is also in residential zoning districts, but it contains portions that sometimes urban farms wanna have, but it might be a little bit more intense. So things like onsite sales, so if they actually wanna sell the produce from that residential property or permanent agriculture structures where they're not allowed in the above use type. So that'd be permanent structures on vacant lots or permanent structures in excess of the 10%. So because this is a more intensive use, it's not permitted outright, but it would require a conditional use permit. And so that is approval. They make an application to the Planning Department. It goes to Planning Board. Neighbors are notified, neighborhood associations are, associations are notified, so people would have a chance if they have an issue or questions, they could come to that meeting and get, give their input. And then once Planning Board, if it's approved, they would be allowed to operate that urban farm. So those two are kind of both in residential districts, but different in intensity. So one's permitted, one's a conditional use permit. And the last one is a commercial farm. So those are things, basically all other urban agriculture operations that are on commercial, office, industrial districts. Most of that stuff, all of the things are permitted, permanent structures, because they're gonna be in those districts where there's already commercial operations happening. So those are the four different use types. Just real quick here, I wanna give you an idea again between the urban garden and the urban farm, what the difference is. So an urban garden, let's say we have a vacant lot here, those are, these are permitted in residential districts. You could have things like raised beds. You could have things like, you know, in-ground planting beds. You could, again, put up some temporary structures, either over the planting beds or the in-ground beds. But again, those temporary structures are no more than 180 days, so they have to come down before that 180 days. And so an urban farm, what would that look like? So this, again, is you have your raised beds, you've got in-ground planting beds, but if you wanted to take part of those in-ground and put up a permanent structure, that would be an urban farm, require a conditional use permit. Likewise, if you wanted to do any sort of onsite sales on a vacant lot, that would also be considered an urban farm and require a conditional use permit. So with those different use types, we added supplemental regulations in the zoning code. So those will regulate things like accessory structures on vacant lots. One of the issues with urban farms that we've had in the past is because there's not a use type defined, they couldn't get a permit to build a shed. So this establishes a use type would allow them to build a shed or other accessory structures. We have regulations for onsite sales where they're permitted. We have regulations on composting, how the design of those, how they're used, equipment and supplies, pesticides, pesticides and fertilizers. Parking, not something you would really think with urban agriculture. The two sort of less intense uses, the zoning code says no parking required. The other two, we would determine if parking was needed at the time of permit, either a building permit or, or a conditional use permit. We are also creating a registry, so all of the urban egg, sites will be required to register with the city name, address, location. Where also part of that is there is significant lead contamination, so we wanna make sure that if those urban farms are operating in areas where lead is an issue, that we know that either it's been mitigated or if it's been tested to make sure that their, the lead contamination is below the limits. Lastly, there's just a couple of things with maintenance. We have regulations on operating hours, talk about lighting and also about signage. So that is hopefully brief. I know it's kinda quick and it's a lot here, so I'll take a break and take your questions later.
Great. Thanks for that overview. Are there other proponents that wanna speak today?
Name the address again, Mr. President?
Yes.
Donnie Johnson, the Johnson Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizens Foundation, 4928 North 52nd Street. Now, Mr. President, me and Mr. Rowe, we understand this very much about the three little pigs, how the two work real fast and the one took his time. That's how Benson was developed, strong foundation and one that took his time. So we understand, um, Oakview Mall, they flight it right away.
So we're talking about community gardens and urban agriculture and zoning?
Yeah, that's why I'm gonna get to this point, 'cause I don't, you don't like folks to elaborate, but I know Village Point came up and Oakview Mall went down and then all this behavior. Can we apply the same process in case the unit come and get their stuff together and we start growing medical marijuana, it's the same program? Keep it in mind, which you can do that, sir.
Gotcha. Other proponents today?
John Porter, 7812 Jackson Street, where I have a perfect bird's eye view of the crossroads development every day. Get to watch that progress. I work for Nebraska Extension, part of UNL. I'm the urban agriculture educator here for the Omaha metro area. And I have had the, the pleasure to work with our planning team and other farmers and, and folks around the community to help with the ordinance that was proposed today. My role in that was sort of like technical advice, like what is a high tunnel versus a greenhouse versus a hoop house, getting to answer some of those questions. And, you know, the thing that I think really this ordinance allows us to do is to promote folks being able to grow their own food. It's an issue of equity. You know, we have food deserts all over the city and being able to have urban farms in order to address some of those issues of food deserts, especially in some of our underserved communities, is, is key, is ideal. It can be an economic driver where we have, you know, if you think of cities where you, where you love to visit, they usually have a very vibrant local food scene. And this would, would really promote that here in, in Omaha as well. And so I'm just here to, to provide my support as a citizen for this ordinance. And if you don't know what extension is, we're sort of part of the UNL University and our job is to help people who want to grow. So people ask us questions. We do workshops, we do classes. We help them, you know, when you want to plant your tree on Arbor Day, you tell you, we tell you how to correctly grow it and plant it, or we come to you in 10 years and tell you why it's dying, which is why it was incorrectly planted on Arbor Day. And so I am here to support and, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Louis Jimenez, 2709 Dooley Avenue. I support the regulations because I think they're going to assist to being more productive. There is already urban farming happening. And this just recognizes what, how things can move forward. One example, in the future, you could have an urban farm supplying various pantries instead of the pantries depending on donations from groceries and waste, or what would become waste if the pantry didn't disperse the produce. So that would be a, a big boost if the urban farming here in Omaha is productive. Pantries can benefit from this. Another component to this, though, in the future, we would need more access to commercial kitchen, uh, community kitchens so that people, the residents can learn how to cook the produce, best way to cook the produce. For example, anybody know what spaghetti squashes? There's squashes come in different varieties and they could be prepared differently. A spaghetti squash, you just slice it in half and then put in the oven for 40 minutes. And then you scoop out the, the meat, the meat. And you can use that as, as the, your base for your spaghetti meal.
I like them too, but we're talking about zoning, right, Louis? Let's stay on point.
Well, I, I mean, this, I'm talking about, this is a forward-looking. This, this is about forward-looking and that's what I'm talking about.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. I might have just one follow-up question for you. I'm very supportive of this too, for all the reasons you noted. And we do have food deserts in the city and I think it is a trend for cities to do this better and allow citizens to grow their own food when it's possible. And I think what you put together here is a thoughtful approach to try and balance that interest with neighborhood interests as well and property interests and have a number of different options here. I did have one question from a constituent who isn't very supportive of this, but his question was about sheds. And I, I think under the community garden and urban garden categories, the sheds are limited to 150 feet. His thought was rather than have what could be multiple sheds at 150 feet, why not be able to have a shed that's more like the 200 square feet, which is accurate with the rest of the categories here. I wanna just give you a chance to respond to that.
Yeah, so I'll take that. Eric England, Planning Department. Yes, we had conversations, obviously, with that constituent around Planning Board time back in January. We did up with the urban garden from 100 square feet to match what was allowed in the community garden, up to 150 square feet. So after those conversations, we did modify that slightly upwards. We believe that the code as proposed is appropriate and the challenge of this is, you know, when we work with our stakeholders and, and different individuals developing this code, you know, they're always kind of envisioning their specific property and their growing operation and how it applies. You know, the challenge for us is when we are implementing zoning code, we are looking at the 230 plus square miles within our city limits and zoning jurisdiction. So that can be challenging to try to keep hundreds of neighborhoods in mind. And so we feel the, the 150 square feet is appropriate. So this could be a scenario, it's, it's not for this individual, but, but I don't remember his exact scenario, but if you had a vacant lot, currently you cannot have a shed or a garage on that vacant lot. So currently zoning code does not allow that. We feel that allowing 150 square feet on a permitted process, so that could be on any vacant lot and that, that shed is to be used for the, the gardening on that property. We feel that is sufficient. There are some different processes in place that an individual could seek to up that. That would include an application to the zoning board of appeals or Board of Appeals, or they could apply for a conditional use permit to basically go to an urban farm, which would allow the planning board discretion to increase that size limit. But just the overall challenge of trying to look at the city as a whole, hundreds of neighborhoods, thinking of residents, neighbors alike, we were comfortable with 150 square feet. I guess that's our response.
Yeah, thanks. And there is a method by which, in individual cases where it could make sense, they could pursue, which is the zoning Board of Appeals, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, something else, as we developed this code and it modified, and it did take some time, because we, you know, the operators that we had met with frequently, Lisa and Tim especially, had met with, you know, we took their feedback. And so last year, you know, in 2021, 2022, we had modified and, you know, at just some of their input. But part of the challenge is we are looking at lots that could be as small as 4,000 square feet, or we are looking at maybe a property that is two acres in size. And so, you know, sometimes we thought about a size, sometimes we would have a percentage of the land. So these different supplemental regulations, we met internally and with the stakeholders extensively, trying to think that through, because not every site, of course, is created equal in size or situation.
Yeah. And I did ask you for a list of folks who have engaged on this issue, I think over the last six months to a year, and the list is long and impressive. I think you did a nice job of engaging stakeholders, and those that are working in this area across the city already.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate that. And I'll credit Lisa Smith. For a number of years, she has been running the department's vacant lot, urban agriculture, basically working with different organizations and groups to allow urban gardening on city-owned lots. And that's been happening for a number of years that Lisa's been engaged with, and obviously Tim and Lisa. Just, yeah, there's a very long list of the stakeholders that have been engaged in part of this process.
And if you're a current community garden, let's say, in Penny Park or Dundee, that do have these, when this passes, there's nothing further you need to do at the moment, right?
No, there's not. We would ask them to register their properties. Once that is set up, we did receive a grant to assist us with those efforts, so there'll be more information coming out on that, and we'll make that available to the stakeholders and on our website. But no, there's nothing else that they would need to do. If this code becomes effective, then basically we have the codes in place. If there was previous operations that were, you know, had certain components that were non-conforming, you know, we operate on a complaint basis, just like any other zoning code item. So we're not going out to make any changes to their properties unless we received a complaint from a neighbor, which up to this point, we haven't.
Okay. And the last question I hadn't thought to ask before, but, you know, some folks do like to garden at night, so can you talk to us for a second about the operating hours and the lighting aspect of what you were mentioning there?
Yeah, the operating hours are really only on vacant lots, so they only apply to vacant lots. They do, and we actually did extend those based on input from gardeners, so I think we had them earlier, and now it's until, I think, until 10:00. And there are no, like, heavy equipment after 9:00, and I think we have it as early as 5:00 or 6:00, I'd have to look at the code, and no heavy equipment until 7:00. So if you have a house, I mean, obviously, we're not going to prevent you from being out in your yard then, but it's on a vacant lot, and it's really just sort of like, because these could be, you know, places where they're growing food for sale, that, just to sort of limit that activity.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Rowe?
On the registration process that you mentioned, will there be fees associated with that registration? Will we be charging for permits?
No.
Okay. And then the other question I have is to, you know, a lot of times, best intentions go awry. And so could you speak to the compliance as far as our litter and weed ordinances and codes, and how we're going to handle that, because sometimes those things can get unwieldy?
Yeah. So we have the weeds and litter, which I think is Parks Department has the staff that deals with those complaints. We have had some gardens that have had, we've had complaints on, and we've gone out and taken care of those. We did add an additional maintenance requirement in there, basically to say if you have herbaceous crops, so tomatoes and stuff that die at the end of the year, that those have to be cleaned out and mulched or composted or somehow removed. So, you know, that is really the only additional thing. Everything else we would handle as we would handle every other complaint for weeds and litter in the city. And those people, we've talked to them, and they're really knowledgeable about different types of plants, and what's weeds and what's not. And so they, I feel comfortable with them taking care of and being, know what's a garden, what's not, and really talking with that property owner. That's part of the reason we want to have the registry as well, so if we get complaints, we know who to contact and can follow up on it.
And it will be complaint-driven, so it's, you know, just if a neighbor has an issue...
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. No further lights. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Item 57, an ordinance to approve Amendment Number Two to the Uptown District Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 57 is today. Proponents, please.
Oh, yeah. Good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, and I'm just here, available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Steven Held, 11506 Nicholas Street, here on behalf of the applicant. I can also answer any questions you may have. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak on number 57?
Not the O'Reilly factor, not today. Name and address again, sir? Donnie Johnson, the Johnson Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizens Foundation. You know, Mr. President, I've been thinking about this. Now, it might help you understand my generation a lot better. So in 1967, I told my-
Is your generation talking about the Uptown District Tax Increment Financing Project?
Yeah. Why, when I would drive down 72nd Street, why, I can explain this to you. Mr. Keywit, Peter Keywit, he made us take these engineering classes in that seventh grade. I'm saying, I said, well, I got to do this. So in the meantime, I would have told them, folks, that buildings collapsed, because we had to take the class. I said, Mr. Keywit, I'm not taking this class. In the meantime, let's go back for a second.
Donnie, this is about a certain property called the Uptown District Tax Increment Financing Project. Are you speaking to that?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to elaborate and get you on the same page as we are.
Let's get to it, please.
Okay, so as we was going through these programs in the school system, and the collapse on these buildings, can we go back for a second here?
No. Stay on topic, please.
Well, I think where the confusion's at about this part, about when they took us up there and taught us how to set foundation, and how we understand how mutual foundation, mutual Omaha is a good foundation, but all these houses being developed, where's the jobs coming from? I asked my friend, Mr. Benny Tomberti, no, Benny, Sesterberti, his cousin was in California with me. I said, your cousin playing football?
Donnie, you're off topic.
Excuse me.
All right. Any other proponents on number 57? Seeing none any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm not a nonprofit. I'm not two nonprofits. I'm just a citizen that wonders about TIF. I don't know what the hell an Uptown District Tax Increment Financing project is. Bro houses and townhomes for who? TIF financing for who? Is this the person that will actually own those properties and keep those properties? Or after they're built, will they move out of town, like Conagra did? I see we're downscaling the project, which is maybe good, because I doubt whether we'll attract all the young people that we think we're going to attract. But your documents don't really say where this is, what it's about. So I think you probably ought to table it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents to number 57? Seeing none, public hearings closed. No lights. Next item.
Item 58, an ordinance to approve the Diggs Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 58 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes. Good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department, and again, I'm available for any questions you have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Got to stay on topic, Donnie, okay?
Yes, sir. I lost my train of thought when I was trying to explain that when I talked to Senator Fisher to upgrade that mandatory sewer system, to get some money for on 72nd Street for the North Omaha Airport.
That's not on topic.
Oh, sorry.
Are there any other proponents on number 58? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Item 59, an ordinance to men, Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code, by adding the employment classification entitled Assistant Golf Course Superintendent Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on number 59 is today. Proponents, please.
Claire Anderson, Human Resources, 1819 Farm Street.
Deb Xander, Human Resources, here to answer any questions.
Chelsea Ship, Human Resources, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 59? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Item 60, an ordinance to men, Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code, by adding the employment classification entitled Grounds Maintenance Technician Personnel Board recommends approval, be it amendment or the whole, requested by the law department.
Public hearing on number 60 is today. Proponents, please.
Claire Anderson, Human Resources, here to answer any questions.
Chelsea Ship, Human Resources, here to answer any questions.
Deb Xander, Human Resources, here to answer questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 61, an ordinance to men, Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code, by changing the salary for the golf course superintendent. Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on number 61 is today. Proponents, please.
Claire Anderson, Human Resources, here for questions.
Chelsea Ship, Human Resources, here to answer questions.
Deb Xander, Human Resources, here to answer questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents on 61? Got to be golf course salary ranges, Donnie, right?
I'm going to stay right on what Senator Fisher taught me about mandatory upgrade.
We're not talking about Senator Fisher.
Oh, my dear friend. Anyway, number 61, this means a salary increase for this guy? Are all two salaries increased? Because if he's going to get a salary increase for the golf as a job salary increase, because I'm trying to figure out, is the city council in the banking business, as Mrs. Melton said, or where's the tip money coming from? I'm trying to figure this out, but at the same time, if he's going to get an upgrade on a salary, which I agree, a golfer should have to make more money. But can you sell us Benson Golf Course in case they close that down because of the lack of golfers, because they go into all the other rich golf courses? Because when I started playing golf in 1960 at Fountainhead Park, I used to caddy for them folks, and they only gave me a $5 tip.
Any other opponents to number 61? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 62, an ordinance to men, Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code, by changing the salary for the landscape gardener. Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on number 62 is today. Proponents, please.
Claire Anderson, Human Resources, here for any questions.
Chelsea Ship, Human Resources, here for any questions.
Deb Xander, Human Resources, here for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents to 62? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Item 63, an ordinance to men, various sections of Chapter 23 of the Omaha Municipal Code, for changes negotiated with Professional Fire Service Manager Association for the years 2023 and 2024. Personnel Board provided and no recommendation.
Public hearing on number 63 is today. Proponents, please.
Bree Robbins, Labor Relations Director, City of Omaha.
Mark McQueen, attorney with Baird Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street. Bree and I partnered up on these negotiations. They're pretty informal, pretty simple agreement. I'll highlight it very quickly. It's a two-year agreement with a 3% wage increase per year. In addition, on the salary progression table, it currently stops at F, six step. We added a G step as part of this negotiations, and that includes a 2% increase over the F step. On the, in the area of health insurance, as you recall, we've tried to standardize the city's health insurance plans for years now. What we're doing in this particular agreement is we're increasing the city's contribution to Health Savings Account to make it consistent with all other bargaining units. If you want the specifics on the amounts, I can provide those to you. We also increased the amount of management leave. That's a benefit afforded to every management bargaining unit in the city. We increased it by one day for those that are working a 40-hour work week. That's consistent with police management. So again, the motivation there was to try to make the two, police and fire management contracts similar. We also eliminated the current cap on sick leave accrual. Again, that's an effort to make this particular contract consistent with the police management contract. It doesn't result in additional liability to the city when employees are departing. They're still capped at the amount of sick leave that they can cash out upon their departure, but it eliminates the cap while they're currently employed, again, consistent with police management. We added the Juneteenth holiday, as we have with every other collective bargaining negotiation that we've been through in the last few years. We increased the uniform reimbursement from $25 and change per pay period to $50. That hasn't changed for 20 years now, so it's about a $600 increase, long overdue. And last but not least, we increased the amount of tuition reimbursement eligibility to make the fire management contract consistent with the rank-and-file contract. They can get reimbursed for up to six credit hours per semester, graduate-level courses, and the reimbursement is capped at UNO credit rates. That's the extent of the agreement. We're hoping for your support and happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Could you just briefly also address the no recommendation from the Personnel Board? That's a bit unusual, but there's an explanation for it.
Sure. At the Personnel Board hearing, there was a 2-2 tie vote, so they didn't approve the contract. That, the no votes at that particular time expressed concern about a pending grievance from a different bargaining unit involving a increase in the amount of deductible under the high deductible health insurance plan. The union in that particular grievance was suggesting that the city did not have a right to increase the deductible amount based upon the language in the ordinance, and that particular grievance was being heard by the Personnel Board at the same time they, or on the same day that they reviewed this proposed agreement. The Personnel Board was concerned that the confusion in the ordinance language maybe should be cleared up before they approved the contract. And at that point in time, this is very important, they weren't sure whether they agreed or disagreed with the grievance. Later that morning, they heard the evidence on the grievance, they denied the grievance, but just based on that uncertainty at the time they reviewed the contract, they were, two members of the Personnel Board were uncomfortable with supporting the contract. I want to also emphasize that the same issue or controversy does not exist with the fire management group. They didn't grieve this increase, and these increases have occurred periodically based on federal regulation dating back to 2019, 2020 range. So it is non-controversial in this particular bargaining unit and others that have the same type of language in the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. No further lights. Next item.
Item 64, an ordinance to accept the quote from Axon Enterprises, Inc., to purchase and install eight video cameras for the Omaha Police Permit Interview Rooms.
Public hearing on number 64 is today. Proponents, please.
I wanted O'Reilly factor, Mike Wallace. I'll do that. Name and address again?
You know the rules.
Donnie Johnson, the Johnson Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizens Foundation, and 4928 North 52nd. Now, I finally remember what I was talking about in this police report here you have on number 64, when I was talking about Senator Fisher, about the airplanes you have, and bringing this sewer system down from that airport.
It's not about sewers or Senator Fisher.
Yeah, but see, you guys are going to give money for camera. My argument is that the police need to take at least two classes a year of some international program instead of cameras. The cameras is okay in the classroom. We've had cameras in the university, but you're going to be buying cameras. Wouldn't it be better to say, look, you guys are going to have to come back to class, because you don't know what you're doing. See, I could tell them that all the time, but if you tell them, they'll listen. In the meantime, I told Senator Fisher, why are you getting money for the airport offer? Get some money for sewer system, the North Omaha Airport.
Thanks, Donnie.
Okay.
Other proponents to number 64?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm a proponent, but I would like to know, why do you let Donnie Johnson go off the track of the topic, and you don't me?
I don't.
And you sat there, you sat there and chuckled with him, but you call me out of order and ask for the deputy over there to take me out. I don't get it, Pete.
Thank you. Any other proponents to number 64?
Me and his grandpa, Bill Benson, that's why we talk.
All right, Donnie.
Yes, sir.
Any opponents to number- Any opponents to number 64? Public hearing's closed, next item.
Item 65 in ordinance to establish a Class A flammable liquid storage district, number A-164, located 8750 Vernon Street.
Public hearing on number 65 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 66 in ordinance to establish a Class B oil district, number B-215, located 8425 North 114th Street.
Public hearing on number 66 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 95, a resolution to temporarily remove Vinnie Palermo from his position of Vice President of the Omaha City Council and to set a hearing for May 2nd to consider whether Vinnie Palermo shall be permitted to serve the remainder of his term as Vice President.
The public hearing and vote on number 95 is today, proponents, please. This is number 95, proponents? Donnie, you got to sit down. You can't speak in the audience.
Louis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I've been hearing a lot in the news and from other residents of Omaha that this is concerning to them because he represents his community. And if you don't have boots on the ground, it's hard to be the Vice President. If you're not here, it's hard to be the Vice President of the council because if you're gone, Mr. Fesserson and the mayor's gone, it's going to be Mr. Palermo who's supposed to be the presiding officer. And that's happened before where, actually to this point, I mean, to this issue, why he's sitting in jail right now. He wasn't available, Mr. Fesserson wasn't available to be the presiding officer, and so you had to vote for a presiding officer and it was council member, Counselor Melton, who was the presiding officer. So I feel like you're going to vote on this and support temporarily removing him. And it'd be the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents to number 95?
Rebecca Beriantos-Patlin, 3305 E Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I have these if you want to hand them out. Sorry about that. I'll read what I have. Good afternoon. In 2021 general election for Omaha City Council, I received 2,691 votes against my opponent, Vinnie Palermo. I feel I am qualified to share this great disappointment in his alleged illegal activities while on U.S. federal probation. Public trust is a privilege and Councilman Palermo has violated that public trust of South Omaha all over and over. Leaders are supposed to be trustworthy, transparent, and fair. Corruption should not be tolerated in or by the city council. I believe Councilman Palermo has made a mockery of us all once again by shaming the City of Omaha, this city council, and South Omaha District 4. My question to you today is, this city council and the Omaha City Law Department, can Mr. Palermo be totally removed from this seat? Not just vice president's seat, by section 8.05, interest in the city's contracts prohibited. It reads, "No elected official or any officer or employee of the city shall have a financial interest, direct or indirect, in any city contract. Any willful violation of this section shall constitute malfeasance and shall be punishable by forfeiture of office or position. Any violation of this section with the knowledge of the person or corporation contracting with the city shall render the contract voidable by the mayor or council." And according to the federal indictment, it alleges that Councilman Vinnie Palermo, count two, honest service fraud. Councilman Palermo claimed to be the owner of Omaha Gas Pro between 2012 and 2019. During that time, he received $93,000 in contracts awarded by the city, but didn't disclose his conflict of interest until he transferred that ownership in 2019. He then concealed the fact that Omaha Glass Pro, its current owner and the former manager, paid off the loan on his truck, paid the rent for the Councilman's tree service business, and made tax payments. Question, again, isn't this enough to totally remove him off the seat? Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Palermo from his district for Omaha City Council position, according to section 8.05 of the city charter, Omaha City Charter. And then also, as of yesterday, there's an active warrant for Councilman Vinnie Palermo for violation of probation. Today, I support this resolution to remove Councilman Palermo as Vice President of Omaha City Council. And I thank you for this time. And I am so saddened that my community has to face all this again and again. He should be removed totally. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I am definitely a proponent for it, but I'd like to see an amendment. And that being that the current council president also be temporarily replaced by a temporary replacement of the president. And the reason is, he treats some people differently than others. Mr. Donnie here gets to stand up and talk to you from the audience. I don't.
He sat down.
You ordered me out when I did that a couple of weeks ago. I raised my hand this afternoon to ask one further question and you denied me. But yet you enjoy back and forth with Mr. Donnie there. And you let him, Mr. Lewis, tell you guys, you guys this and you guys that. You wouldn't let me do that. When I get one sentence or one word off of a topic of one of those items, you call me out of order.
You're getting close.
And if I object to that, you ask that gentleman, at risk of his job probably, to remove me from the chambers. Now, I'd like to see you do that to these guys. Thank you.
Any other proponents on number 95? Any other proponents on number 95? Thank you. Any opponents to number 95? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. So it brings me no joy to have to introduce this resolution. But however, due to the actions resulting in the numerous indictments involving Mr. Palermo and others, I felt it was incumbent upon this body to remove Mr. Palermo from his office of Vice President of the city council. Mr. Palermo has violated the public's trust again. In my opinion, he should resign from the body altogether. But we are limited, maybe, in that ability. There's nothing in the state statutes that gives us that power. And I had made a note that I was going to, and Rebecca Beriantos-Patlin has pointed out something that we are taking a look at, section 8.05 of the charter. So there may be something in the charter, but due to the fact that we did not know what the indictments might have in them, at least everything at that point that had been considered for removal from the office did not cover that area. So that is something that we're looking at. But at the very least, he should not hold the position of Vice President of this council. Last Friday, when this came about and it was, again, at that time, not thinking that there was state statute or charter provisions that allowed for the removal, we began to look at Roberts' Rules and see if there was something in Roberts' Rules that we could utilize, at least to remove Mr. Palermo from Vice President of the city council. I had numerous discussions with council members Melton and Rowe and Bernard Endenbosh from our legal department and noted that, or saw that there was a path that we could take, which I think was important to take, to remove, as this resolution does, temporarily today and then sets up basically a show cause hearing next week for the permanent removal from that office. And that is what the resolution that we have before us to consider. But the pattern of his past activities and the new allegations of criminal conspiracy, public corruption, and fraud is to say, at the least, very concerning. Mr. Palermo should not be making decisions on city contracts. He should not be making decisions on public safety. He should not be making decisions on expenditures of taxpayers' dollars. There's so much happening in Omaha right now, so many great and exciting projects. And they will grow our city. But with respect to the law and the votes and decisions that benefit the citizens of Omaha, those should be made to benefit the citizens of Omaha. Those should not be made for the benefit of one's personal interests. That is why we've brought this resolution to this agenda to consider today. And I hope that we have a unanimous vote on it. And I think the citizens of Omaha deserve for us to send them the message that they deserve more. They deserve representation that respects the law and is making the decisions, again, to the benefit of the citizens of Omaha and not to the benefit of their self-interest.
Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, as others in Omaha, Nebraska, was taken aback this weekend with the news of the indictments. But also, I began to do some research, online research, and I found this article by the U.S. attorney that is responsible for this case. His remarks in the World Herald are as follows. "The indictments were returned by the grand jury this week in Omaha, Nebraska. The indictments are comprised of multiple counts. Each count is merely an accusation. And all defendants are presumed innocent until, unless and until proven guilty." Our constitution clearly suggests that we are all, as citizens, are innocent until we're proven guilty. That's why we have a court system. When we talk about the law, we can't just arbitrarily pick and choose what part of the law that we want to implement, agree to, discard, what have you. The law clearly states that a person is presumably innocent until proven guilty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say that I appreciate Mr. Harding's comments and I have nothing to add to what he said. And I would be fully in favor of this resolution.
Thank you. Ms. Melton?
Thank you. I agree. I believe everybody, you're innocent until proven guilty in this country and I believe in that and I believe in our constitution. However, when you are charged with a crime, usually the victims receive no contact orders. So while you're pending and while you're defending yourself, though, we want to make sure that the alleged victims are protected. I think that's exactly what this does right now. It's protecting the taxpayers and the citizens of Omaha from any future potential damage, liability, fraud, or corruption. At this point in time, we aren't presuming innocence or guilt. We're simply protecting the potential alleged victims, like is done in any other criminal action. So there's no harm in protecting the citizens from the allegations that could continue if we don't remove Councilman Palermo just from his position of Vice President. And right now, that's what we need to do. He may not be available. And by the way, it's a temporary removal. He actually receives the benefit of having a show cause hearing a week from today. But in the meantime, for the next week, we're at least providing some protections for not just the people of his district, but all of Omaha. So that's why I support this. And again, it has nothing to do with the assumption of innocence or guilt. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley?
Thanks, Mr. President. As was mentioned, there's due process for anyone accused of a crime. And as a U.S. Navy veteran, Mr. Palermo, like any other citizen, is entitled to that. So as we go forward with this resolution, I want people to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree, Mr. Palermo should forego his leadership position under these circumstances, so I'm supportive of this resolution today, too. I want folks to know he's already been removed from his committee assignments as well. I took that action as president yesterday, which I can do administratively. I want to engage Mr. Endenbosh in a few questions here, just so we make sure we understand the process here, since this is a new process. Mr. Endenbosh, should this be approved today, it would go into effect immediately and the office of Vice President would remain vacant until the next leadership election. Is that correct?
Now, if the action, this resolution were approved today, he would be temporarily removed from the position, so upon signage of the resolution, until the due process hearing that he's entitled to next week. Depending on what occurs next week, if it was the will of the council as a whole to keep him from the Vice President position, then you're absolutely right. The position would remain vacant, absent some action that you would initiate to fill it until his term as Vice President ends, which I believe is on June 5th of 2023. If at next week's hearing he were to appear, we would have an evidentiary hearing in the council. The will of the council would be that he would continue, that he'd be continued to allow to serve as Vice President, that he could be reinstated as Vice President up until the end of his term.
Should there be that show cause hearing on May 2nd?
Correct.
There seems to be a lot of interest in this next topic, too, so I just wanted to address it, the issue of acting mayor. So I'm acting mayor right now. The mayor is out of town until Saturday. If this is approved today, as acting mayor, I can sign it right after this meeting, which I would do, which is why this goes into effect immediately, right?
Correct.
This week, with the mayor being out of town, I'm currently scheduled to also be out of town later this week to see my daughter's final volleyball game. I have changed my travel plans before under these circumstances and I may still do that yet this week. But by approving this resolution today, that issue is also resolved because Councilman Palermo is not, would no longer be Vice President. And should both the mayor and the city council president be out of town, the charter provision kicks in, was approved by voters recently, which says the council member with the most seniority then becomes acting mayor.
That's correct. If Mr. Palermo, I mean, obviously, there's a detention hearing tomorrow, but if Mr., if you were gone, if the mayor happened to be out of town, you happened to be out of town, and Mr. Palermo were within the city limits, but for this action, he could potentially act as mayor. With this action, notwithstanding whether he's in city limits or not, he would not be in that line of succession. And based on the amendment to Charter, section 2.08, it would go to the longest-tenured city council person.
Okay. So by taking this action today, that issue is resolved as well?
Correct.
Thank you. I don't see any further lights. There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Non-action items, items 67 through 93 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on agenda for The item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at four twenty-nine.